Hope this meeting paid County Commissioners, we start the pledge of allegiance. The flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all have a copy of the amendments to proceeding meetings or any additions or corrections?
Mr. President, there are no additions or corrections. I move the amendments to be accepted as presented.
Saad.
Been moved the second amendments be approved as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the department head reports. We'll start with the Highway Department. Mr. Carl.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. We, uh, we finished up on some roads of in Berman. We did, uh, 200 South, 550 West, 300 South, and 600 West. We're on Beaver right now and we got about a mile left to do on Berman. Um, we got the salt all taken care of. We've got 250 ton in there right now. We got another 850 ton coming the first part of November. And we got the tarp ordered. It'll be in here.
Before the salt.
What's that?
The tarp will be here before the salt.
The salt will be here, or the tarp will be here before the salt. So, um, did some ditching work down there on 150 West, down there by Dale Lanning's. We had, uh, we've ditched that many times in the past and in result, the road started giving away. So, we went down, put some small rip raft in there to try to steady up the bank. Did a little spray patching over top of it to keep it all in place. So, that should be in pretty good shape. Uh, we got a can to put in on dead end fillings. We got the can out there right now, Culver can. It's 24 by 40. We're gonna put in and make sure it all lines up with the waterway, but we gotta get it, uh, located. Now, we ain't got no water. Today, we're filling in road, road edges there on, uh, Memorial Drive and then we're gonna check out water road and Waterloo Road to make sure, uh, ain't got no big drop-offs on the edge of the road, so. Other than that, that's about it, I guess, but, uh, I guess you guys got any questions?
No. What Richard was talking about, about the tarp for the salt, the, the salt vendors have stated that what we, pretty much what we get now is all we're gonna get him. Where we got salt last year, they wouldn't even, uh, take a bid.
Martin pulled out of us this year.
They just pulled out of business for this, for this area.
Yeah, there's a salt shortage, they say, but I think they're just trying to get more money out of, you know.
And Richard has checked with, other counties have bought salt and covered it up with the tarp and, um, and it worked out real well, so he decided to just go get what salt we need and we've got enough for the winter now.
Because if we didn't, we was taking a chance.
You wouldn't get it.
Yeah, we wouldn't have got it. We had to go with the lemon.
Right, so I think that's a good move.
Makes sense. But, uh, everybody knows what's going on and I just wanna thank you guys for the opportunity you gave me.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, bearing with me with the family and stuff like that. Yesterday did me in. It was like a slap in the face, you know, speculating before you found out the truth, but I do wanna thank you for the apologies and stuff like that when I come to that truck. But other than that, that kinda did me in, boys. I can't, I ain't gonna play that, so I thank you guys very much.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Is that it, Richard?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Surveyor?
The only thing I have is, uh, they've started the Phase Two, the bridge reconstruction. Butler Fermers Cypher started last week, so it's a two-year update, which would be no new book, but, uh, they've already pointed out one bridge that we may have to look at. Um, waiting for them to make it official. And that's Bridge 90, uh, on Waterloo Road, north of Erie, just north of city limits, with, uh, deck problems on it. So, we may need some maintenance and may look at, uh, replacement, whether federal aid or local shares. So, they're gonna give me a cost estimate, a local share. But other than that, I don't have any, anything unless you have some questions.
No, I don't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Maintenance, Bill Gray, what do you got for us?
Morning.
Morning.
Other than the tile and the carpet has all been cleaned, parcels, uh, they have come back and spot, done some spots that they missed. They done, um, Debbie's office yesterday, yesterday evening. Uh, they hit the stairway, up the top of the stairway a couple of times. Seems like that's where everybody spilled everything. They're not supposed to be anywhere with nothing, but that's where, that's where it all ended up. Pretty much, they, uh, they've, uh, they've done, I thought they've done a good job.
Yeah, they did.
I've had several more offices ask me about carpet cleaning, which they do need, uh, Superior Court offices. So, what I'm gonna do is I'll get some, I'll get some quotes from him and then come back and you guys can decide what you wanna do.
Okay.
We have, we do have some more carpet needed. Um, the air conditioner in the annex has been fixed, so I don't care. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, team director, Mr. Kane?
I have all sorts of goodies to hand.
You really do?
You passing out a new computer? I wish. I need two different things here.
Yeah, actually three different things. Um, the first item I handed you was for a quote from Lau and Associates to get us a new server. Um, this would actually not be, from my understanding, any cost to the county as the auditor's office has a, basically a support account with Lau and Associates that that money would come from. So, the money is already with Lau. They would just apply it to the server. So, we just need to get that signed so that we can get this, um, server, cause right now the tax, the property tax and the financial system is all residing on one server and they would prefer to be separate in case something happens so that it's not all in one place. Um, so it's not really any cost, it just needs approval.
That's kinda unusual, isn't it, for them to furnish equipment out of a support account?
No, they did that before when we got new, uh, monitors in our office, those new wider monitors. We all had small monitors like this and it was really hard to see everything we needed to see. And they came through and they bought those out of our support account. It's that we don't use, that, you know, it's standard, so much goes into the support account and, uh, typically we've never used all of what we needed. I guess that's saying we're good at our jobs, but...
You'd rather charge us too much to start with.
But anyway, um, and we get way more support, uh, with them than we've ever gotten with another vendor. A lot of that too helps because we have somebody right here, uh, in Bayett County that is one of their support reps, Lori, that used to work on this office.
And she is good.
She's excellent, so.
So, we need Martin to buy that.
Yeah.
Salute. Second.
Been moved the second, we, as reasonable person, the server with money coming out of his support account, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Um, next thing I've got on the list is a report from Met, about the MetroNet phone issue that we've been fighting the last couple of weeks and the end of the month. They have ordered a Cisco 2921 router that will hopefully alleviate or completely get rid of the problem. Um, that is on order. They're anticipating a week or two before that comes in and we have to schedule the install to get that installed. Um, this is not gonna be any cost to us, this is just so you guys know what's going on. Um, they've also given us a firmware upgrade on all the phones to bring them up to the newest software again to try to just track down where this call cutout problem has been originating from.
We have had a, more than our share of problems with that new phone service, it seems like.
Yeah, and it's just, since I've started, it just seems like it's gotten worse, almost like a, like a virus really, where it started out small and it's, it's kinda spread.
Are they having the same problem with the city?
The city's having the same problem, um, at the City Hall, but not the other locations. I mean, TV3, City Street Department, they're all in the same system and they're not having problems, except when they're calling City Hall or calling us. So, um, where the problem is, I've been working with Chris Edwards from MetroNet just about every day for like the last four to six weeks. And we've changed things, we've tracked things down. They came and helped rewire part of our system to make sure it was all the way it was supposed to be, just to verify things, cause they wanna get it fixed as well, but it, we haven't narrowed it down yet. And the randomness of the call problems is part of what's making it so hard to track down because it's not every call and it's not every call to one area. It could be a cellphone one time, it could be a call to Rushville another, it could be an internal call another. So, there's no real obvious rhyme or reason as to where, why it's happening.
And they have no idea, really?
No, they've, they've, it's kinda like chasing smoke. He's, he's changed settings, he's looked at things, he's talked to Cisco, you know, it's kind of like, you know, everything is the way it's supposed to be set and where's the problem coming from?
They don't have this problem in other locations?
No, they said they've got another location that has 800 phones set up just like ours and they don't have that problem. So, whether it's our amount of call volume that's causing the problem or something else, we really don't know at this point, so.
Well, it has to get fixed.
Yeah, I definitely agree with you.
It's terrible.
And, uh, Chris has been very, you know, every time there's a problem, I email or call him, I probably talk to him or emailed him 10 to 20 times a day as we've tried to work this out. Um, next on my list is the camera project. Martin wanted me to look and get rough idea for prices for cameras to go on the outside of the building. Um, I've called four vendors and none of them gave me a price. They said that they would get back to me. I did get the, what they call the MSRP, so we at least know what the high ball for the cameras would be for the outside, for the parking lot. Um, one is looking like $3,531 and the other is $2,766. That would be the cameras.
How much?
Twenty-seven-hundred-and-sixty-six. So, we could go with either one of those, but they're fairly expensive and that would give us the, the ability to pander around the parking lot, to zoom in on cars if there was a problem. Um, however, I don't personally know if that's, if we have enough need to justify that or if that would affect the insurance.
I do know in reading that, um, security survey that, that Beth, that Judge Bush gave us, that's one of the items in there that they thought we needed.
Yeah, and Ron Best quoted, um, a thousand dollars, a thousand and twelve dollars and seventeen cents to install cameras, so it would be that plus the cost of two cameras, now whichever camera we went with.
Well, I think while we're, while we're putting in the, the cameras for the security system, we might as well do the complete job and, and get it done is what my thoughts are.
I think for liability purposes, if someone claims they fell or they were assaulted on county property or whatever, okay, uh, we need to be able to zoom in and be able to distinguish John from Frank from Tom, whatever.
Well, the zooming in is an active thing. That's only gonna matter if they, if, like, Sheriff Department is, is watching it right then, you know, and they happen to see it and they zoom in on it after the fact. It's gonna be the same thing as what we've got now. You're zooming in on a still, basically a still image. You're gonna get some definition improvement, but you're not going to have the CSI miracle camera where you, you don't get it pixelated, you just come up with more, um, definition than what the picture has.
But I still think as many megapixels or as much resolution as possible.
Yeah, okay. And the one with the most resolution is the one that was, um, the 3,531 MSRP. So, it should be less than that, but I don't have a sure price yet. Like I said, I called four vendors and none of them has gotten back with me yet. I called them again last night after I talked to you.
I, I would suggest that we have Michael get a, get the firm quotes on these in our next meeting. I thought he purchased these cameras and had them put in. The rest of our, the rest of our camera system should be completed by then, right?
Ron was hoping to get it started this week and possibly even finish this week, but he didn't, wasn't completely sure on what that, what else would be going on, but he had a little certainty.
He wasn't willing to get it started this month, if he said.
Yeah, they won't get finished this month.
Yeah.
Um, next thing I've got is the jail. Uh, we've got a desk move planned this weekend there. Skylar and I will be there on Saturday for probably eight hours, moving the, the desk in the control room. Um, they're gonna tear that desk out. It's a built-in desk, they're gonna tear it out and put a new one in. So, we've gotta move everything off this weekend. So, that's mostly for your information, doesn't require any kind of, um, approval. Um, the internet access for the sign maintenance is in process. It should be in, hopefully in the next week or two. Um, and then the final two items I've got on my list are the Barracuda invoice that I handed to everyone. This is for our spam prevention on our email. Um, Ben originally set this up, I believe, as a trial in May and then, uh, signed up for the service for us for the year in June. And this invoice is saying past due because they just emailed to me, I had never seen it. Um, it's $800 for the year for 100 emails being covered. And on that second page, you can kind of see how much spam we're blocking. Since signing up for the service, it has processed 88,985 emails and blocked 52,000 spam messages. So, if we didn't have this service, we would have people that had those 52,000 messages in their, um, work email box, some of it being viruses, some of it just being stupid stuff, and some of it being things that are just wasting time. But in the meantime, it's keeping it out of our system. So, we need to get that approved and, uh, payment, our claim sent for them to get paid, so.
Well, is that in with our claim? We were gonna present it after one.
No, I don't think so. You, you, we didn't give this to Sharon, did you, yet?
No, I have not.
No, we will pay them the next time, I guess.
Yeah, it's $800, so it could be, I believe it could be paid on a credit card or I could do a check claim, whichever. I just, it was $800, so I need to get approval.
If we're in danger of losing it, I guess, if they approve to go ahead, I guess we could pay it with the credit card.
I believe so.
Okay.
You need a motion?
Uh, yes, we do.
Um, I make the motion that we approve the $800 for paying for the Barracuda. Second.
Been moved the second, we have to pass the bill of $800 to Barracuda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Michael? Your, your thing in the jail, when you're moving that, moving the desk to replace it, um, are you disconnecting anything that goes through your recording system?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Um, that's one of the reasons why this is gonna take about eight hours is because it looks kind of like a rat's nest under that desk. So, we're gonna be doing a lot of line tracing, move one item to the table, trace the lines, hook something back up, go back, move something else, trace the lines. And I know I've gotta move one of the radio cords. I have no idea where it's connected or how much line I've got, so we've gotta do all this tracing and tracking to find out where everything goes and what can be done.
The reason I ask is I got the, I got the approval for that my last few months with Sheriff and they installed it under Billy and I didn't know if there were any warranty agreements that could be violated by someone other than the company involving itself with that, the recording system.
That I don't know. I'll, I'll check the jail and have them check their agreements because I have no clue.
Okay.
I mean, I don't even know what's under some of that stuff because none of the equipment is labeled in some of those cases, so, I mean, there's even some old controllers for the camera system that I think haven't been used in 15 years that are still connected.
Hmm, you'll be surprised what's under there.
Yeah, and that's part of why we're, we're planning to do it on a weekend when I was told that the jail is fairly slow, so we're not gonna interrupt the primary work, we're not gonna end up having anything go crazy. Um, I mean, the easiest thing to move is the computers. I mean, that's the thing that, I think, I can move those in five minutes, but it's all the other equipment that's plugged in there and connected to that desk. So, and the final thing I've got on my list is a reminder about the clerk copier quote that I did last week, or last meeting, just something to keep in mind of getting that approved or not approved, so we can have some kind of plan in place for copies for elections. She said that's the time that she really needs that machine to, to work perfect. And the one upstairs, it sounded like there's a squirrel stuck inside of it.
They what?
I said it sounded like there's a squirrel stuck inside of it. It squeaks and squawks every time they make copies.
I think the squirrels are funny.
Yeah, and that's just regular copies, so once they get to doing high volume around the time of elections, we, we don't wanna have huge problems, so.
So, that needs, that needs purchasing now, I understand.
If we could at least get it going, um, so that we even have it by end of October and going into election time, that would probably be optimal, but yeah, the sooner the better. And I don't have that quote in the stuff that I gave you. I think it was like...
Forty-three-hundred or something like that?
Yeah, something like that.
Like a hundred and sixty-nine or something, a hundred and sixty-one or something like that?
Yeah, for the three-year, for the three-year agreement.
Did we figure out where we were paying for it, uh?
That's why, I think it was table last meeting and I don't know that that's gone that far, so. But that's just why I wanted to remind you in case that, you know, so that we could still be figuring that out or get that taken care of.
So, is that a stoked item that we could get right away if we order?
Fairly quick, yeah. I was told that as soon as we ordered it and got the paperwork going, it shouldn't be too long to...
If we approved it at our first meeting in October, would that be soon enough to?
I believe so.
Okay.
I mean, if that's the soonest that we can do it, that's the soonest that we can do it regardless, but I just wanted to make sure that it didn't just get forgotten about.
Well, why don't we just have, you put it on the agenda for first of October, then we can do the research of where the money is gonna come from.
Yeah.
And what we can do and we'll take care of it in first meeting in October.
Any other questions for me?
Was there any substantially lower cost not having it color and having it black and white?
Not really. It didn't make much difference on the, uh, on the different quotes. I think it made about $300 difference overall. So, for that difference, we might as well get the big color machine on that floor that can be used by everybody when they need to do color for some reason, um, like courts and Superior and all that, so. Any other questions for me?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
County attorney, Chris?
Yes, good morning. Um, somebody where there's a wind farm company that's interested in setting up a wind farm here in Bayett County. Um, it has the potential to be a pretty big transaction and I think it requires someone with a specialty in this area. I have a letter of engagement from Rick Hall from Barge and Thornburg. Um, he's a counsel for the association of Indiana counties. He's done similar deals with this with other counties. I think that would be in the county's and the commissioner's best interest to have him to help negotiate any potential deal in this matter. So, it'd be my recommendation that you, um, go ahead and enter this letter, letter of engagement with Rick Hall to represent the county in the wind farm negotiations.
Okay.
And I have that here, but you probably need to make a motion.
Yeah, I, um, you've all seen the windmill pieces coming through Connorsville, going to Randolph County. Um, I went up for the weekend and they've got a bunch of those windmills done and some starting and some more to build in there. It is a, it is a big deal in that they have huge equipment out there. They've tear up our road. We have, we have to, uh, protect our interest in, uh, maintaining those roads and make sure they get, they get put back where they were. Mr. Hall, uh, was the representative for, uh, for Randolph County when, when they made their agreement with that wind farm. Uh, and you've probably read in the paper that they, they got a sizable mon, bunch of money before they started in, so we, we need somebody to, that's familiar with that, to negotiate with them. People, I would recommend that we approve hiring Mr. Mr. Hall to represent us.
Salute. Second half.
Been moved the second, we do approve signing the letter of engagement to Mr. Hall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
And, um, besides that, I don't have anything else unless there's any concerns from you guys.
No, I don't think so. Counsel representative, do I see Mr. Bennett down here?
I have nothing for the commissioners, other than to thank you publicly for your help and support of the budget and adopting the budget. We appreciate your help and being flexible with us on that. We couldn't have gotten it done without your help and support. Other than I have nothing else, unless you have something for the counsel.
No, I will mention that, uh, our highway garage is still ongoing. We had a, um, we're putting that out for bids again in, um, various stages of reducing the size of it. We had a pre-bid meeting yesterday and we're gonna be taking bids next Tuesday at 10 o'clock. So, we'll see what the outcome of that is and hope the counsel will be, uh, favorable to us.
I hope so, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see the director of EDG is here. Ms. Parker, did you want, did you wanna speak to us, or?
Uh, I, I'm here more as a listener than a talker, but, uh, being you've recognized me and invited me, I'll just say, I wanna thank you, uh, for your support, uh, in, uh, going forward in the future financially. I appreciate that very much. I know that the EDG board does as well. And, um, I look forward to the, uh, future regarding the engagement of Mr. Hall for our wind farms. And, um, that's really all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Next item is the mail. Do we have any, do you have any mailers coming in?
Yes. Want me to read it, or?
Uh, is that the same thing?
Same one you have.
We, we do have another letter from, uh, bragging on our highway department. We get a lot of native comments about what we do, but this is the last, last meeting we had a, a letter and we have a, a letter here from Bob and Darlene Nobby. Congratulations, uh, stating how the excellent job of their highway department doing it. It's, it's kinda nice to hear once in a while that we do something right. Is that the only one we have?
Um, yeah, I think that's the only thing. I, I might mention, and this kind of, this was more in just communication with the city, and that is, um, because this is the first year, we will have, um, AV14 pay 15, I say next year will be the first year, uh, for assessed value to be assigned to the old Visteon plant where Wayzetta is, which is a TIF, um, area. And, um, I worked with Julie Greason at the city and it turns out we had to have what they call a TIF neutralization report and, um, Julie, uh, she said they had worked with Umba, which we've worked at Umba Accounting Firm before. So, I contacted them and, and I kind of said to Julie, I said, "Well, there's gonna be a fee involved with this." They expected maybe fifteen-hundred to $2,000, uh, for completing that neutralization report, but we can't go forward with getting our net, net assessed values reported without it. It was kind of a little spot I was hung up on and couldn't go forward without. And, um, so, um, Umba went ahead and did that. I told them, I said, "Well, I think, I don't know if it makes any difference when you do the report, but we went from zero value till now we do have value." And it was just the properties involved there, I think four properties and four parcels. So, at... So they sent that back, and, and, well, and then Julie talked to the mayor, who said, "Well, really, it shouldn't be up to the county to pay for that," because they had actually been the one that had initiated the TIF. So they went ahead, and they said they would pay for that, and then I got a call back from Umba after they completed the, the report, and sent it on to me and said they're not charging us anything for it, because it was barely easy. So that, that part is done. So the TIF is kind of a new area, the first, first TIF area we've had, so I know a lot of counties have multiple, multiple TIF districts, so it's just different on, on how you do the property taxes, and what you have to exclude, and how you have to do it. So I was glad we're off on the right foot with that, so...
Cold business, we don't have any listed. New best community corrections, contract amendment.
I was notified on August the 28th by the Indiana Department of Corrections that they needed the commissioners to sign an amendment to the current grant, and that would be for, and a couple of months ago I came in and notified you that we have received an $8,464 base increase that will be permanent from this point forward. They've added that into the amendment, and also the bonus that we were given back in March. We've already received the funds, $13,815.24. So I need to have this signed by the commissioners, and the original has to go back to the Department of Corrections. I can either mail it or have a mandatory meeting with them next week. I can hand deliver it at that point. So that's the number one thing. That's the first thing right under the cover.
Basically, basically this, you're just, this housekeeping here, the plan is reflecting the additional monies.
Right. They just need to get everything straight on the record.
Yes.
You said it was...
Listen, Madam.
Here's a copy, did you... Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. Thank you.
The original email I attached on there from the Department of Corrections.
I got the number wrong, so thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If there are no objections, I would love to authorize you or us to sign, I guess all of us, to sign this contract amendment. The attorney said it's okay.
Okay. Then move the second that we are going to be signing the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The rest of your packet there is, on July the 30th, the state jail inspector, along with the residential committee from Indiana Association of Community Corrections at counties, was here to do the two-year inspection as required by law. And I gave you a copy of the report. Everything went well. You can read in there. The only thing we weren't checking, the fire extinguisher, heat monthly, all that's been taken care of now. And the state jail inspector said it was the cleanest facility that he'd ever seen. He was, he really praised us about our facility. So I've included that report for your review, and the one that's in the little folder is the annual report for the Indiana Department of Corrections. It's due the first of September every year. Explains everything that was done for that grant cycle 1314, has all our stats in it. If you're not sure what happens at Community Corrections, if you read that, it's going to give you a clear oversight. And the cost analysis is in the back also, as to the tax savings. So it's a complete breakdown.
I was actually in the facility yesterday, and I remarked, while I was waiting on you to come to the office, I remarked to your help how, how clean even the office areas are, and then I went in the back with you, and usually jails or confinement facilities have a particular fragrance to them, kind of like gym locker rooms. The place did not at all. It was very clean, neat for a facility that it is. It's very well done.
Thank you. Staff does a good job, and the offenders, they clean, they have a cleaning schedule every night, and second shift oversees that. The cleaning is done daily. That's all I have.
Thank you, Michelle.
I'm here today to ask permission to apply for the local health maintenance grant, as well as the local health trust account. These funds total about $50,000, and that's what we operate, the tobacco cessation program and the immunization program for the health department. It pays for salaries, supplies, and I just need permission to apply.
Well, it probably gives you a price for money. Slow move.
Second.
Then move the second that we approve applying for the grants. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Pointing the cemetery board, Liz with home, probably a month ago, sent us a letter that she was, because of health reasons, having resigned from the cemetery board, and we've been looking for someone to, to replace her. The cemetery board has come up with a recommendation of Frank Nutty. I guess he has been going through some of their needs and, and working in, with him in the cemetery, and they think he would be a good fit. So if the rest of the commissioners agree, we, I would recommend that we appoint Frank to the cemetery board. Slow move.
Second.
Then move the second that we appoint Frank Nutty to the cemetery board, make it immediately. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That's the end of the agenda. Do we have any patron's concerns? Anybody wants to brag on us or chew on us about anything?
I don't think we have any patrons here.
Well, not many. If not, we have, need a motion to approve claims in the payroll. Slow move.
Second.
Then move the second that claims in the payroll be approved as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That being the end of the items of entertaining motion, attorney general.
Slow move. Second.
Then move the second that this meeting, commissioners be adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.